Evening, members, ladies and gentlemen, officers and any members of the public watching. Welcome to the Overview and Scrutiny Committee Environment Overview and Scrutiny Committee Meeting of Monday 17th of September 2018. We have, hopefully, the fire precaution, well, warning behind us if there's a fire. We all meet over at, under the canopy at Waitrose. Take your favourite entrance, they are signed around. If you wouldn't mind ensuring that you turn your mobile phones off or to silent, please. And if gentlemen and ladies would like to take their jackets off because it's a little bit warm in here, you're more than welcome to do it now because I'm going to and I think my vice-chairman would wish to. And I'd like to welcome John Ward, who's sitting in on, councillor John Ward is sitting on all four of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee meetings in this cycle, and to Andrew Bolton, the Environment Portfolio holder. And we have officers here for questions later. We've got Martin Knowles, we've got Graham Parrott, we've got Elizabeth Sims, Rosie Plusto from Finance, Annie Wrighton, Richard Homewood, Lewis Norrie and Nora Copping. Members, we will now get on with the agenda. The minutes of the meeting of the 2nd July 2018 are within your papers. Would you please confirm them as a correct record? Is that agreed? Thank you. Apologies for absence and substitutions. Fiona, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, Chairman. We've had apologies from councillor Dennis Lee and there are no substitutions this evening.
Thank you. And declarations for interest, item three, Fiona?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest anyone would like to add now, members? Okay, thank you. Questions by members of the public? I understand that no questions have been received.
No questions.
Thank you. And no questions from members either, item five?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Racing through this, item six, on pages 15 to 20 of your agenda papers, is your Environment Corporate Priorities update. I'd like to invite Graham Parrott to introduce his report, please. Thank you, Graham.
Chairman, if it's all right, I'd be introducing that, this report. It'll be all right. Thank you. So, thank you, Chairman. This is the regular update for you, members, on the Environment Corporate Priorities. Just a few additional points to provide to you since the preparation of the report. In relation to paragraph 1.1, where we've given you an update on Local Plan Part One, just to elaborate on that, on the 9th and 10th of October, that will be the full hearing in the High Court on basically one principal issue, and that is about basically the transparency of the explanation of the inspector on the local plan in relation to the picking up of Woking's unmet need for Waverley. As you'll be aware, all the other grounds were set aside by the court and have not been upheld. Paragraph 1.2, the further challenge to the plan, that was the challenge in relation to the Milford Golf Course allocation, and that has been dismissed. So, that is obviously good news for our local plan. Chairman, moving on to paragraph 2.3, which is the update on Local Plan Part Two, we did hope to give you an update on the meetings for the committee cycle for Local Plan Part Two, but they haven't yet been finalised. But we are intending those to be set for the end of October. But, members, we'll be aware that there is an all-member briefing in your calendar in relation to Local Plan Part Two for next week, from the 25th of the 9th, where the headlines out of the consultation will be presented to you to invite discussion on some of those headlines. And that will be combined with the headlines in relation to the peer review that's been carried out in relation to planning decision-making. One of the key themes coming out of the peer review is about planning delivery, and that obviously relates very closely to the topic of plan-making. So, both areas will be explored at all-member briefing next week. Chairman, a further update to your report, page 17, at the top. You'll recall, members, the discussion at your last meeting, you requested a little bit more information about the progress on neighbourhood plans. And to help with a bit more detail, we're going to include this table and update it every cycle for you now. We set this out at the time of the preparation of the report, but there's a further update to give you on Elstod and Webber. It says preparing the plan, but that plan is now up for consultation, and members may have seen that. But that consultation has commenced. And indeed, the Farnham, the review of the Farnham neighbourhood plan, I'm sure you're aware, has also commenced with a deadline for the end of September. Moving on, Chairman, in relation to SIL, we haven't yet got anything formally to report back to you. We're still formally waiting for the examiner's report. We'll be able to update members as soon as possible on that. And I think probably that is all I was going to add. Otherwise, the report is as set out. So, happy to take any questions. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Elizabeth. That was excellent. Members, I don't know whether you've had the chance to go through this, there's not a lot there to read, but do we have any comments in respect of any of those items, Local Plan Part One, Part Two, Neighbourhood Plans, SIL, Dunsfold Park, Bright Wells and Ground Maintenance? Yes, Maurice?
Just a quick question. Apologise for my ignorance. What is Regulation 14? I can imagine what it might be, but I don't, I don't think I've read it. And if I have read it and I've forgotten it, I apologise.
My understanding, Chairman, is Regulation 14 is the slightly more informal stage of consultation on a neighbourhood plan. It's a bit like, I suppose, it's akin to where we consult on what we might call the preferred option, say, for a local plan. And I think you get on to the more formal stage related to examination and submission and that sort of thing when you get to Regulation 15. And I think so both Farnham and Elstod, I think, at the moment, the current consultations on those are under Regulation 14.
Is that Planning and Composite Purchase or Localism Act or what? Sorry, I shouldn't have asked that one, should I?
I think, Chairman, it's the Neighbourhood Plan Regulation, as far as I know.
That might make sense, mightn't it? Okay, thank you. If you want to go to it on your computer, you can look up Regulation 14 of the Neighbourhood Plan Regulation and see exactly what it says there. And then see what Regulation 15 is, because that'll be coming along in a minute, I'm quite sure, won't it? Okay, yes, Peter, councillor Isherwood.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Really a question for the head of planning, Mrs Sims. With the introduction later this year of SIL, do you see any change in the way windfall developments come about? Do you see a reduction in the number or are people just going to take less profit from the deal?
Who'd like to take that? No, conferring is allowed. We'll take your first answer.
Chairman, I think, obviously, one of the issues that was raised by representations before the SIL examination from some quarters was a concern that would this have an impact on the deliverability of development? And it wasn't singling out particular types of development, it was just development generally. And developers were saying that it may have an effect because it's quite a relatively high SIL rate, certainly compared to some of the older SIL rates that exist in some of the other authorities in Surrey. And that, you know, we'd have looked at that very, very carefully. This has been on the cards now for some time that SIL is on its way in Waverley. Obviously, ultimately, when we get the sort of, the examiner's report and we can report it to members, there'll be a decision then around when we're actually going to start collecting the SIL, because obviously you adopt it and then agree when you're going to implement it in a little bit of a lead-in time. But the work that was done around viability was showing the margins that exist there in terms of potential, in terms of viability, to enable SIL to be introduced. And that was with a, with a margin, a buffer, if you like, as well. So, you know, there are, I think, likely to be some developers who will be doing their utmost to get their applications in before SIL is introduced, because clearly they will see that as an opportunity to pay less, because we can't secure as much at the moment through section 106. But I think, you know, our feeling would be that we've got the balance right in terms of infrastructure funding, but not wanting to sort of put the stops on development.
If I may come back? You may, but do bear in mind that the next item is Agenda, Agenda item seven is Planning and Infrastructure, and we'll be talking about this in some more detail. But please, yes, do follow up if you wish. Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Wyatt, did you have any comments on the, now? As far as the issues of bringing things forward on to the local plan, if you look at our recommendation here, it's recommended the committee notes the progress on the council's corporate priorities, considers whether there are matters in relation to these that they'd like to add to the committee forward programme, obviously provided it fits the criteria. We, because of the stage of these streets, I don't think that we can now sensibly bring that on to this committee, although finances could be looked at by the value for money or whatever, I'm sure. I would actually like a clarification for my own benefit, please, as to how far does the remit of this committee go in terms of looking at projects? Because I've always understood that we should be able to look at deliverability, things that aren't within, you know, planning considerations, put it that way. But obviously, we can't talk about individual planning applications that are outstanding or presumably that have just gone through or whatever. So, you know, with something like this, whether it's Dunsfold, whether it's Bright Wells, Memorial Hall, all those sort of things, what can we as overview and scrutiny look at specifically? Finance, of course, but as environment, under planning, what can we look at and what can't we?
I think the committee does have a role to play, particularly sort of taking on board what Elizabeth has just said about deliverability and whether the council is delivering on the commitments made in the local plan in terms of housing numbers and how we're going about that. And Elizabeth would be able to elaborate more in terms of the challenge that the government has set in relation to delivery of housing numbers. But I think that's where the committee does have a role to play in scrutinising the delivery of the local plan. And where there are sort of key sites, then there may be some aspects to scrutinise. I'm not sure that it's sort of a, an in-depth review, but sort of certainly seeking information about what we're doing, how we're working with developers once permissions have been granted, particularly on big strategic sites, to ensure that they deliver. It was one of the points that was made during the consideration of Local Plan Part One, that the council doesn't build homes, but the, and that's what the developers do. But the government has turned that back on local councils to put the challenge of delivering with the local authority. And Elizabeth and Graham would be able to expand on how that test is sort of set out. But I think there is a role for the committee in terms of the deliverability.
I don't think I'm going to give away any secrets here, but, members, you're probably, but you may not be aware, actually, that Elizabeth flew in at half past one this afternoon to be at this meeting early and back from her holiday. So, I don't want to press her too much, but if she would like to answer that, or you can just, you know, you don't have to if you don't want to, you can tell me another time. But I think it's important, actually, at some point, that we do sort of know the boundaries as to which, I'll give you an example, that I've had a couple of members of my ward who have mentioned the Memorial Hall project and said, well, we should be looking at the money side and whatever. And we really need to know what can we look at on these projects, what can't we look at on these projects? And, you know, that would be VFM, of course, if you're looking at money. But, you know, where does our remit end in terms of planning? Thanks.
I suppose, Chairman, all I would do is to add to what Fiona said, I think that there has to be a clear distinction between the role of overview and scrutiny feeding into the executive process and that of planning committees, whose job it is to determine planning applications. And where the interest may stray into seeking to understand the deliverability of development through a planning application and the merits or otherwise of that planning application, that's clearly has to remain under the remit of the planning committee. But in terms of deliverability of housing as a theme, which is really important as a corporate priority, to enable the council to maintain control that the local plan has brought it, that is, that is a project area which I think is certainly of mainstream interest to the executive and therefore, I would imagine, also to overview and scrutiny. And as we start to look at some of the infrastructure projects in the next report, you'll see the linkages between ensuring that we're working effectively as a council to deliver the infrastructure, to ensure that the growth that's coming is adequately supported. I hope that's answered your question, Chairman.
Yes, that gives me a lot better idea. I hope members should understand what we can, what can be looking at. But councillor Forisiewski?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I think your point is a very valid one, and I think it is critical that there is a body within this council that picks up on what you're asking to do for scrutiny and accountability once the planning decision has been made. Because how else do we feed that information back to the executive? And an example of why I believe it should be accountable is when it comes to 106 contributions. If a planning permission has become extant and we don't know when it's going to be delivered, but you might have a contribution towards infrastructure that has been accounted for and maybe depended on to deliver that, but it hasn't because maybe a developer has decided to hold off for whatever reasons, I think we need to be all of the time ahead of this so as we can actually explain to our residents and to the executive where and what is happening at any one point, that when we've made these decisions, we are actually backing them up with what we said we would do. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you very much for that, because that leads us very nicely into the next item. So, we'll just wrap up item six, the corporate priorities issue there. There is another issue that's behind this and which is important to a number of them, which we'd hoped or said that we would bring on to the agenda at this meeting, but were unable to, which is mostly with the suite man and habitats issues. But I understand that we should be able to bring those forward to a separate meeting. We have got a separate meeting for LPP Two coming up, as Elizabeth said at the beginning of this meeting as well. And we'll cover that, though, when we get through to, I think, page 95 on the agenda in the forward programme. So, if we've got no more comment on that, I don't think there's anything that we need to report to the executive or make any suggestions. So, members happy, move on to the next item. Item seven, item seven is planning and infrastructure, which is to update us on a range of potential options for securing funding for infrastructure. So, we're all interested in that. If Graham Parrott would perhaps like to present his report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Before I go into the detail of the report, I think Elizabeth might just want to say a few words about the wider context, and then I'm happy then to go through it. And I'll take you through the report and in particular pull out some of the key issues that we'd like you to be thinking about this evening.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, members, that further to your discussion at a previous meeting, where you did indicate you would be interested in having a further discussion about infrastructure, but also consistent with a number of projects that are coming through our current service plan. We pulled this report together because we recognise how important it is to ensure that we're clear about the mechanisms and the opportunities to provide infrastructure, as I said on the previous item, to support the growth that is coming through pursuant to the local plan. It's on everybody's lips. People ask us almost daily, well, what are you doing about the infrastructure? And we feel that this report should be helpful to be a signpost as a source of reference, really, to the mainstreams that are coming through and mechanisms to provide infrastructure and seek the relevant funding. But also to help our public out there understand that we are working very hard to ensure that we're not missing opportunities to seek available funding to provide the infrastructure that's already been identified in the infrastructure delivery plan. So, that's really what the report's about. As Graham said, he is able to talk you through the report. And as the chairman said at the beginning, we have invited Martin Knowles to join us this evening. Many of you will have met Martin through the Local Plan Part One process. He helped us very much in wading our way through some of the technical highway advice at the time, and has also had a lot of experience in supporting other councils in delivering infrastructure. So, there may be some questions he'll be able to help us with as well. So, thank you, Chairman.
Right, members, the report is really splits into two parts. So, the first part is about some of the things that we do at the moment, the ways in which we try and secure infrastructure, monitoring and so on. And that's essentially around section 106 agreements, which you're all very familiar with. I've included SIL as a current thing only because, obviously, we're working very closely now towards the implementation of SIL, and that's obviously up and running in other authorities as a tool. But we'll come back, come back to that in terms of some of the actions that we're following through. And the third strand, if you like, I suppose, is the funding for infrastructure that comes from other sources. And I think we tried to set out in the report on pages 22 through to 24, just some of the issues and maybe some of the challenges perhaps that we face in relation to some of those areas. And that's what then really informed the sort of, the key part of the report and the part I think we wanted to focus on this evening. And that is really starting on page 24, where we've just tried to identify some of the opportunities around infrastructure. Again, opportunities around securing more infrastructure, how we deal with the information we have around infrastructure provision through section 106s. And perhaps if I can just take you through some of those in the report, and that may then help to inform the discussion afterwards. So, just taking them as they appear in the report, taking a more holistic approach to section 106, including improved monitoring and identification of projects. And this is around lots of work we've been doing within the team. We've now employed, as you, I think, may be aware, a section 106 officer. We've also got a new IT system called Exacom, which we've acquired, which was also incidentally acquired for SIL. In fact, I think it was developed really, I think, primarily for SIL, but it has a module relating to section 106. And this is about enabling us to have much more readily available information on section 106 agreements. I think, I don't know the number exactly, but I'm sure it runs into the hundreds in terms of legal agreements that we've got on the system, if you like. And then members are very keen to get a bit more information sometimes about some of the ones that might be affecting their areas. So, a key part of that project with the section 106 officer is to get a lot of this information up and into the Exacom system so that we have that information that we can pull out very easily on different legal agreements and what's required. So, we're sort of well underway in getting part of that work underway. And that, as Elizabeth said, is one of the items in the service plan for this year. In terms of SIL, well, I think you'll be aware of the two track process there in terms of, and this committee's been involved, obviously, in the work towards implementing SIL, setting the, trying to identify the rates and so on. And we are, I think, now very close to getting our inspectors' report on SIL, so hopefully then bring that back through the committee cycle sometime very soon in terms of readiness for implementing SIL. And allied to that are the separate issues which are being considered in terms of the governance arrangements around SIL. We do incidentally have a SIL officer as well, so that officer is working very hard to get all the things we need to get done ready for the practical implementation of SIL and obviously using this new IT system as well that we've acquired, which is used by other authorities in terms of administration of SIL. Prioritising projects, this is really around, you know, updating our infrastructure delivery plan. You know, clearly, once SIL is in place in particular, you know, there'll need to be, when we get into the situation of how we're going to be spending SIL money, there needs to be some prioritisation around how that's going to, what are the, what are the key projects that you actually want to spend the money on? And also, the prioritisation does help in terms of other issues, which I'll come on to in a moment, around, you know, if there are funds available perhaps for infrastructure, what are the ones we really need to be targeting and trying to prioritise? And so, that's a sort of key area of work. And Martin's certainly been assisting in terms of looking and reviewing, starting to review some of the transport projects that are in the infrastructure delivery plan, making sure they're still up to date and so on and so forth. We've identified a particular piece of work we've been talking to the county council about, which is relating to Farnham specifically, because in Cranley, for some of the major developments there, the county, I think, were quite proactive in trying to identify where they might want to try and secure section 106 contributions without falling foul of the SIL limitations in terms of pooling. So, we want some, we've been doing some work and we're talking to the county about making sure that we're clear about what some of those priorities are going forward for Farnham. I mean, to some extent, it might become, not academic, but clearly, once SIL is in place, the role of section 106 falls away quite considerably anyway. So, but nonetheless, I think, you know, we are obviously mindful of the importance in looking at where we can still use 106 and making sure it's used in the right way. The next one is about progressing projects to a more advanced stage. Now, the best example to give here is that every now and again, what happens is that the government or the local enterprise partnership might open up a bidding round for some funds, which councils and others have to bid for in terms of infrastructure. Often, the ones we've been most familiar with recently have been transport projects. But what's become quite clear, I think, from conversations we've had with the county councillors, that you are better placed perhaps to be successful in some of these bidding rounds if you've got projects that have been developed to a certain stage, you know, some sort of basic scheme drawn up, some business case prepared. So that if you only have a month or two months in which to prepare and submit your bids, you know, you've got projects that you're ready to roll with. And certainly, the message, as I said, coming out from the county has been that where they've been successful in securing funds for projects, often it's because these projects have been developed to a certain stage already. And that clearly has implications in terms of, in terms of resourcing. Greater officer and member engagement in key agencies, and I think we're doing that anyway, but I think, you know, we want to try and make sure, we're taking every opportunity to make sure that, whether it's through the local enterprise partnership or other organisations, that Waverley's there with a voice, trying to emphasise the importance of infrastructure and not any risk of Waverley being seen to be overlooked, if you like, as being a, you know, rural authority and so on and so forth. Because, you know, we have infrastructure requirements just like all of our other neighbours, and we need to make sure we're at the table as far as we're able to be and getting involved in those other organisations. We talked there about the potential to employ a transport planner. Now, there are other authorities already in Surrey who have a situation where they have a post which is, say, funded 50% by the county council, so for half that person's time they work for Surrey, for half the time they're working for that local authority, but the brief is around transport projects. And I think, as I said, there are other authorities that already do that. I think we certainly think that's something which we should be actively exploring. I think there are ways in which that can be funded, I think, you know, potentially through use of SIL receipts and so on. So, we're already actively having those sort of conversations. And I think if you have any questions on that, Martin may even be able to give some, because I know Guildford, for example, have somebody employed in that kind of role, supporting them. Setting up an officer-striked member group, again, we already started that conversation with Surrey about is there more we can do specifically with Surrey, just in terms of engagement at officer and potentially member level, to make sure that, again, that we are, that they're fully clear about the infrastructure requirements, they're giving us the support we need, and also we're helping them if they are responsible, for example, for preparing some of these bids for projects. So, perhaps having a more regular dialogue would be helpful in relation to that. More joint working with other neighbours, maybe this might seem a bit more ad hoc, but I mean, we do, you know, some of these things are having cross-boundary implications. We do take the opportunity through some of the regular dialogue we have with neighbours under things like the duty to cooperate, the tilliers, but, you know, those opportunities should, again, should be continually explored. I'm thinking, for example, we've had discussions with Hampshire and with Rushmore, for example, in the past about potential issues about cross-boundary transport matters there and what's in, what's going into their local plan, how our local plan dovetails with that, what are some of the key infrastructure priorities that have been identified? Continuing support for relevant national, regional and subregional improvement projects, that's about, as I said, trying to make sure that we are engaged with every opportunity we can to try and support others who are trying to secure funding which may have infrastructure that is either directly related to Waverley or indirectly related to Waverley, but nonetheless has benefits for, practical benefits for Waverley. The last bullet point I've got there is the Surrey-wide projects, and this is through things like Surrey Futures. And you may be aware that there was a workshop run by Surrey Futures in the summer, which is about discussions around infrastructure and priorities and so on and so forth, that Tom and Elizabeth attended. And I think if you had any questions on that, I'm sure Elizabeth can give you some more information on that. So, that's just a sort of a run-through, just some of the examples we've identified. And I think if you go on to page 25, we went on to talk about some issues where maybe the particular ones where there might be member involvement. But I think just sticking with the priorities on page 24, I think we felt that was perhaps the basis for some sort of discussion. And you'll see in the recommendation that we are obviously looking And you'll see in the recommendation that we are obviously looking for you to note the opportunities and obviously to comment on those, to pass any comments on to the executive, but also under three to consider whether or not you would like to carry out any further scrutiny work in order to support the officers in pursuing any of these opportunities. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed Graham, I think that was very useful to run through that in some detail actually because it is an issue in which there is a lot of interest around the borough. I know both at councillor level and with residents. If we perhaps move to members straight away, Maurice, questions please.
Thank you Chairman, well, thank you Graham for talking about joint working with neighbours, that was high on my agenda. I highlighted it on my report, just to understand what's going on. Because there's been a lot of stuff on Facebook and things of dissatisfaction or misunderstanding, a lot of blame culture etc going on about the Arons Hill development and the, is it Arons Hill and the alternative site on the other side of the Guildford Borough, the boundary between Guildford and Waverley. And a lot of misinformation has been passed, not by us, not by members, but by the public, misrepresenting. I actually took the opportunity to explain that it wasn't a plot between Guildford and Waverley to create a large new development across boroughs so that we didn't have the same, that we could discard some of the problems that were being created. But it was a part of the boundaries commission which did it, I don't know how many years ago, I just said decades. It fairly well stopped then, but there's obviously lots and lots of misunderstanding. But it brings the point, and I have brought it up before, of what can we do? I know this is a general report, but what can we do? Because clearly in that particular instance, you have a series, I think 200 houses, I think the application in Guildford has gone in now and they have no communication resource to Guildford as a borough except on tiny narrow roads and on RKC bridges. But therefore they will be using our facilities and things like that. How do we manage to achieve something with regard to infrastructure that encompasses what they're doing with ours? I know it's a detailed question rather than a general question, but it is a concern which has been expressed by me in the past and by others now. And I would love to know where we go with this because so much of Godelming, for instance, parts of it are not in Waverley Borough, they're in Guildford Borough. You can't even identify them, you go out on the Charterhouse Road, you can't see. I don't think we actually have a sign up, or if we do, it's hidden behind trees or bushes. You can't see when you go out of Waverley and into Guildford or vice versa. Yet those people clearly are having some services, except they're wheelie bins. And you can tell the difference by which colour wheelie bins they have outside their house and on what day. It'll happen in other places, I would be interested to know how we can get.
That is a very good point and it's something which I think we need to look at the system as to how we can change things. We've always been taught particularly with the Joint Planning Committee and I know councillor Isherwood will always tell us, get involved in the process of a planning application as early as possible in order to try and influence the section 106 issues. But officers, when that stage has gone by and we've got through to the approval, we've approved it in the Joint Planning Committee presumably, and then, you know, the development proceeds to the build stage, can we then change what's happened? I know the rules change, this is a question I brought up earlier and they said it, I could mention it here, I don't think it's a difficult one particularly. But can we change things once we've got past the stage of, you know, everything being signed off and agreed? Without perhaps having to go through a variation or whatever? So if we've agreed that they're going to spend, you know, £200,000 on particular roads issues, but we then decide we don't want that, actually it wasn't a good idea. That's what, when the rules were changed in 2015, we have to tie the S106 payment to a particular project, don't we, to a particular scheme? Can we change it after that? Because that seems to be a problem where if we don't get in early, we get the problem that councillor Byam is talking about and we need to know how we can get the right developments at Godelming certainly or the right infrastructure.
Thank you Chairman, I can give some very general advice on the approach. For any application, clearly it's got to seek to mitigate its own impact. And I won't talk about Arons Hill for the moment, I'll talk about general approach, which as planning committee members you're very aware of. You can't expect an applicant to do any more than that than provide for mitigation for the development that they're proposing. And the 106 obligations need to be reasonable, appropriate and relevant to that particular development. So there's nothing new about that. And coming now on to Arons Hill, that application has come forward in advance of SIL and clearly it's complicated by the fact that it's not certain yet, but there may well be also proposals coming forward which will be considered by Guildford, which may be considered appropriate on their side. For both sides of the boundary, nothing is certain because neither authority has made any decision. But as a starting point, both authorities will need to ensure that the bits of development on their side are appropriate and satisfactorily mitigated for. What is also appropriate, of course, that where you have a development anywhere which is effectively part of the same development that crosses over a boundary, this is coming back to councillor Byam's point, how can we be certain that we get the appropriate mitigation for the complete development? And if permission is granted, and I'm not prejudging anything, but if permission is granted for the part on the Waverley side, subject to a section 106, and subsequently proposals come forward on the other side, which are also found to be acceptable, the applicant may initiate the discussion around the fact, well, I've already got this section 106 in place, but actually to deliver this entire development, it's appropriate to alter the mitigation and therefore the 106, to put in place varied mitigation to accommodate the entire development. Or that may be at the initiative of either council. But certainly joint discussions and joint working will always be important. And just to reassure members, we're already having those discussions with the developers in relation to the appropriate mitigation for the application that's in on the Waverley side. And we're mindful that there is possibly further development going to be coming forward on the other side. But of course, at this point in time, we can't require, we're not the planning authority for that bit, nor can we require anything which doesn't have any certainty. So the discussions are taking place, but there are some challenges. But the solution must be the appropriate one, having regard to a holistic approach to the actual scheme. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Elizabeth. And after, you know, changing things afterwards, whether it's Dunstfold or wherever, you know, that sort of thing where it's been agreed, gone through, but then later we think, oh, we'd like a railway line instead or whatever. We've got to chuck the money somewhere else completely different, can we do it?
Well, that's what I mean about it, it may well be after one decision is made. If circumstances change, the developer may come forward to say that they want to alter the legal agreement, modify the legal agreement to vary the mitigation to, or that the demands on them, if it's the same developer, in relation to, sorry, in relation to the other part of the development may mean that the obligation needs to change and that will be done obviously voluntarily on the part of the parties to the legal agreement. So there's nothing unusual about varying a legal agreement subsequently. But unless it's reasonable, we as planning authority can't make them vary it once it's been concluded.
Okay, thank you, Peter Isherwood.
Thank you Chairman, just coming back to the point of highways officer. We all know the number of times we talk about the highways officer and get their reports. I know the planning department talk regularly to our Surrey highways officers. But if we were able to actually walk into the planning section and talk to someone about highways, I think it would be highly desirable, I really do. We'd all feel a little happier even if we didn't always like the results. Therefore, I would hope that we can move forward with this idea of having a joint Surrey-Waverley traffic officer, roads officer. Is obviously going to be fairly experienced in the role to take on some of the problems that we do have in this part of the world. But so, you know, my own feeling is let's push for it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, does anybody have any, Wyatt, please.
Thank you Chairman, I'm in complete agreement with Peter about the desirability of having somebody that specialises in traffic or highways here in Waverley. Clearly a big part of their role would be communicating with the people at Surrey and the different involvements. I think that's an example of where we want something specific, more tangible. I had thought from the action on you or that you came up with at the previous meeting where you said you would have a report on the framework for infrastructure delivery and how the council needed to position itself, we'd have something a bit more detailed. I'd really like to see this document, good as it is in that high level sense, turned into something much more tangible in terms of detailed actions, setting up these groups, the local members. Speaking of somebody, as you know, is dual-hatted, a big part of my time on the county council is to do with the highways. We even have a small allocation of money ourselves to know just what could happen when and how to get it involved with section 106s and SIL would be, I think, a massive benefit to creating some sort of team spirit on that. But I think all of this is a bit high level and we need it turned into actions. I think we need to have a mechanism by which somebody could say, wouldn't it be a good idea if we had some funds to make that improvement there? And then have some sort of list or file or something somewhere so that you weren't always bothering the traffic officer. Maybe something online where you could go and look to see, is something planned for that? Or is it on our wish list? So that if an appropriate development is going to happen on XYZ road, then we've already got one or two things put there by somebody who'd like to see something happen that can go in a section 106s. I am rather sensitive to this issue because I have seen a number of areas where section 106s have failed to be put into position or made difficult to put in because they had to be voluntary, they couldn't be enforced, but I was getting the wrong advice on that. Where we seem to have got an agreement with the Surrey officers that we'd get a section 106 on a particular pub, but it then didn't happen. And there was the one, of course, that hit the Herald where 300k's worth of money for education didn't happen. So with those sensitivities, I'd really like this turned into something much more tangible, much more specific and evidence as to what happens, i.e. an action plan and those specifics identified to us as what's going to happen. Now, maybe some of that action is what's in the infrastructure delivery plan. But whatever it is, I'd like to see it come back to this group in the not too distant future. Or maybe perhaps initially the proposed as to what you'd like to do and see if that occurs, accords with what everybody thinks. I'm rather hoping that I'll get a few nods of agreement around the room.
Wyatt, well, recommendation three is that we consider whether or not we'd like to carry out further scrutiny work in order to support officers in pursuing these opportunities. I'm just wondering whether, because we have got the expert Martin Knowles with us and he may have experience from somewhere else that might answer some of the points that you've just raised there. Would you like to comment? I'm not forcing you to, but if you'd like to come in because we haven't heard from you.
Thank you Chairman, so some really interesting points have been raised. We've got the infrastructure delivery plan which formed part of the local plan and that was really a long list of projects, you know, transport and other projects. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, we can't afford to deliver all of those, you know, for the development that's coming forward. So what I would suggest that the council needs to think quite seriously about is what projects are going to be delivered by development through section 106? Because you can only pull up to five contributions, which ones are going to be funded by SIL? I.e. transport schemes, but then you're going to be up against other schemes as well. So it's not just transport that SIL will pay for, so you need to think quite carefully about whether, you know, what proportion of that SIL money goes towards transport. And then also identify where you're going to need government funding. Because some of the schemes, particularly, for example, around Farnham, where a lot of developments already happened, you are going to need to have funding from government really to implement anything tangible in that area. So, you know, the sort of list of the various schemes is, you know, it's something that now can come forwards now that the local plan has been adopted and SIL is, I understand is going to be in place hopefully soon. Hopefully it'd be positive. So yes, I very much agree with what members are saying about the fact we now need to draw down to the detail. And actually, the council needs to agree on what schemes are important for delivery, particularly through SIL. But also where you get to the bidding stage, and this is probably where the joint post would really help, having defined schemes that the county has signed up to, that are prepared in advance so that when this funding comes forward, and it does come forward very short notice, we don't tend to know much about the funding until actually the publication of bids. And that certainly over the last couple of years, that's the way the government's worked. It's very much sort of short term, try and help with the economy, delivering schemes that have been held up because there's a lack of infrastructure. But to be able to demonstrate to the government that development is being held up, you actually need to have a scheme in place that, you know, you know how much it's going to cost, you know what it's going to deliver in terms of the cost benefit, because that's the way the government works. It's all got to sort of, you know, have a positive cost benefit. But also you need to know what the safety implications of it are. So that technically, you know, what you don't want to do is bid for the money and then find out you can't deliver it because that would be embarrassing for all. So, you know, it does need the council, or I would suggest the council needs to think quite seriously about whether they're willing to fund the advancement of these schemes because it does require quite a lot of work actually to get those schemes in advance. And the joint post is quite useful, you know, for example, Guildford's probably at the extreme end of what's happened with them taking on schemes because they have got a major project scheme, sorry, a major projects team of seven sort of members of staff. But they've also got a joint post with Surrey as well and that's really helped in terms of the county understanding the needs of the borough in terms of where they're moving forward. So having that joint post, you know, where they spend half their time at county hall, they're talking to the people at county hall, making sure that, for example, the development control officers, that the county understands what's being put forward has really been quite helpful for Guildford. But also Surrey Heath have a joint post as well and I believe Mole Valley has as well. So, you know, it's something that's been around for a couple of years. And, you know, Surrey Heath has got let funding for the meadows round about at the north of the A331. Guildford's been very successful in terms of let funding, you know, over £20 million awarded sort of recently. But that did take a lot of work, a lot of effort to actually put forward that case.
Thank you very much for that actually, that's probably raised a lot more questions amongst members. But to Mary, you've indicated.
Yes, thank you Chairman, thank you officers for the report. It's extremely helpful, comprehensive and it's a good starting point. I think if we'd had a crystal ball five, six years ago and we could see what was going to be happening and we could see some of these strategic sites and what they could deliver us in terms of 106, we would be in a very different place than we are today. But we didn't know what was going to happen, we were on the back foot all of the time and, you know, and then we could have had all these working parties and joint working with other cross-boundary. I personally think this is extremely complicated, I think it's challenging. I think as a council, we need to be much more forward-thinking and we need to have much more joined-up thinking. And I think gone of the days where we can say, well, the Surrey's in that section, that the county's in that section and Waverley's this section and the town's that, we've got to have this joined-up thinking because, like Wyatt said, and I wholeheartedly agree, we've got dual-hatted members that we can feed into, that we can actually get this message out further afield. I accept in Cranley that we will get 1,700 houses, don't like it, but I'll accept it. But now what I want is to deliver on the promises that those developers said. Now, if you look at the borough, it's fragmented in its needs and its requirements. So in Cranley, for instance, the Albridge Bridge, we want to make sure that the contributions that have been put forward actually go to that. Now, if you've got a phased development and they don't deliver on it, what happens then? Do we only get part bridge? And that's where we really need to strengthen this joint working party. As a council, we often talk in jargon, but I think to our residents, and Maurice came up with something, said something earlier on, it's absolutely true. I've been looking at the community Facebook pages and it's really, really interesting of how many, how just now, people are waking up and going, have you seen what's happening in the fields in Cranley? And I said, where were you five years ago? You know, it's old news now and they're banging away and shouting and screaming and I think it's too late. So whilst I didn't like what was happening, I accepted and I wanted to see it being delivered on. And I see it very much more at grassroots levels because infrastructure, we tend to think about roads and highways and potholes and all of this, but it's about education, it's about leisure, it's about wider the remit. It's a bit like us having a shopping list and I want to be able to say, done it, done it, done it. And the more complex we make it, the more we are at risk of. And the more complex we make it, the more we are at risk of losing it. And Chairman, I go back to your point, and I think it was a valid one. We need going forward to be able to scrutinise and make accountable and make deliverability possible so as we can deliver on our infrastructure. Because we're dependent on 106 to deliver all these projects that we've got on paper. So recommendation three there, for me, could be strengthened, could be added to, and I think there's an awful lot we could do with that recommendation to actually push it. And let's not be scared anymore. We've, you know, we've got the strategic sites, we've got the 106, and we've got to be thinking forward of how, if that doesn't deliver, where the other funds are going to come from, to make sure if we're going to get a proper two-way system on the Albridge Bridge, we get it, and we don't, it's not default because a developer comes in and says, actually, I can't deliver that scheme now. So Chairman, your point is well-made, and the points made before me are very well-made. I think we've got to be ambitious now, and we've got to be brave, and we've got to sit down and start making some demands and getting a really robust joint working group together involving cross-boundaries and actually do something and tick off the shopping list what we need. Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, I went on.
I think actually someone in Cranley is pretty sharp and is a step ahead of you there, councillor Forisiewski. On page 24, if you look at the fourth bullet point, you'll see that there is actually a Cranley infrastructure list, according to this, which is of course CIL. So someone there is trying to get all our community infrastructure levy money from across the borough targeted into Cranley by calling it by the same name. I'm just wondering, could we change that Cranley infrastructure list so we don't have CIL and CIL in the same sort of like, you know what I'm saying about? It's a silly comment. But yeah, someone's doing that, apparently.
Chairman, if I may come back on that, we're all doing it in our own way, shape and form, but what's happening is we're not delivering on it. So, you know, we have a wish list for things that we'd like to happen, and we put it on paper, and it goes before members, and members go, yeah, that's great, and it gets signed up. Then it gets consigned to the bin, and it's not looked at again, and then we go, oh, I thought we were going to have some bins on the High Street. So it's not new, it's not new news, it's what used to happen. And that's why I say we have to deliver on those promises and not make it like it was before, just sitting down, talking about it, actually deliver on it.
Thank you, councillor Forisiewski. I want to try and turn that, ask a man who knows, is one of the principles of Try and Live Bayern, and we're lucky enough, as I say, to have Martin Knowles with us. Martin, in terms of our recommendation we've got here, recommendation three, we've got to do further scrutiny. We would like to, I think, this committee would like to be involved, some members certainly in further scrutiny work, in order to be able to make these things happen. And you've obviously got that experience from elsewhere. What would you suggest we do? What's best for us to do now to push, to make it happen? What have you seen works best elsewhere for people in our position to get things moving? And certainly for, for instance, councillor Forisiewski, to get the infrastructure she wants in Cranley.
Okay, one's not controversial, and that's obviously knowing what you want, you know, in terms of schemes, because developers just want certainty. When they come forward to a planning application, they just need to understand what, you know, what's required of them. And if they're going to get planning consent, because they, you know, they fund something that, as long as it's, you know, within the bounds of the wording within SIL, you know, it's got to be reasonable and scaled and kind and, you know, meet those tests. You know, you'll see around the UK, that is flexed in different ways. Some authorities will get a lot more on the basis of that than other authorities. And it is about knowing what you want as an authority, you know, and being clear with the developers from day one so they can factor it into their business plan, you know, for their site, you know, and just being straight with them. So that's the first point, I'd say. The second point is a little bit more difficult, because I think you've got to put your money where your mouth is as well. You need to develop these schemes, and therefore, with the best will in the world, the county council, although they are the highway authority, they haven't got the resources to do that. And where I've seen local authorities, particularly in Surrey, be successful is where the local authorities got involved in partnership with the county and actually started funding some of these things themselves. And I know that's a difficult thing for local authorities to think through, you know, the budget's been very difficult, but it does work. You know, if you develop these schemes and you bring the county along, you know, with you, then, you know, you're there ready when development comes forward, rather than sort of having to try and play catch-up all the time, you know, particularly when you're bidding as well. You've got a scheme, you've got SIL money, because all of the funding from government has to be matched-funded, and that can be anywhere between 25% and 50% of the funding. So the authorities that are successful, the ones that have already got that approval through the system, through members, that that money is allocated towards those schemes, so that when you're bidding for, you know, when these schemes come forward and you've got a month to put forward a bid, all the processes have already been gone through, and therefore you know exactly what you want. And that's, again, for government, they just want that certainty that they're not going to be embarrassed by allocating money to a local authority or to a county council, only for them to be told a couple of years later that, sorry, we can't spend the money because the scheme doesn't work or hasn't been developed. Hopefully that helps.
Very much so. Members, then you'll... Sorry, Elizabeth, did you want to comment? You don't have to. Yes, if you'd like to come back, Mary, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and thank you for your indulgence in letting me come back. I think three, we could include there, I don't know what my other fellow member's going to think, but why don't we have a creation of a SIG that's going to look at this in proper detail and actually present it as a working, ongoing, evolving document that could be presented as something that is... Because like Martin said there, there's a big difference between want and need, and when it comes to major infrastructure on our roads, that is a real need. So in order to deliver it, we need a constructive plan, and I think it would be a good idea to have a SIG that is dedicated to this task, to look at all the variables and maybe take it forward that way.
I'm in complete agreement with what Mary said there with the early item three. I'd like to suggest that as a precursor to that, at item two, we take the observation or send the observation back to the executive that this area needs a work-through action plan, and that we're prepared to put in our involvement in that through the creation of a SIG, C.3, as it were.
councillor Ward and councillor Bolton, you're welcome to. If anything's arisen in your minds, you're welcome to speak, just indicate, but councillor Bayern.
Well, I need to say, you know, I support Mary's point, as long as Mary isn't on it, because she's a bully and she'll take everything away. No, we've got to work together. And I think it's something that we all need to do, and it'll have to obviously cover the whole borough, but there are certain areas that have more problems than others.
A little bit careful, Mr councillor Bayern, because I think you're on the Waverley web tomorrow as the guy who said that the people of Godleming have been spreading misinformation. Did you mention that?
I'd be disappointed if I'm not, because otherwise, they have a special name for me as well.
Bypass, yes. Anybody else? Yes, Yasmin.
Thank you. Unfortunately, SIGs predate my time at Waverley, and I'd have to look to either Fiona or Louise to know about what the constitution says about those. But if I understand correctly, it could form a working group that we've done previously recently, so I'd be happy to work with Fiona to set those up.
Okay. I would like to propose we put together a working group to start pushing this, and my immediate thought was the man with two hats, councillor White Ramsdale, to be on that. Do we have two or three other members who would want to be Waverley's best hope in getting infrastructure funding together? Who's our... The bully, the bypass, and who else?
I think I've seen Morris, Mary, Peter and Nick.
Do we need that many?
Yes.
Because we've got to be able to get you together in one place at the same time a number of times.
Well, having this few spare ones in case people can't attend is always a beneficial...
Always better to have some spares, we can, you know, euthanasia, we can always resort to, can't we? Okay, so we have got, thank you very much indeed. Let's look at our recommendations, because I don't think we need to take this much further. Any more comments, members? Yeah, councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Chairman. As long as you're absolutely clear of the terms of reference of the SIG, I will very much support it. Please be absolutely clear of the terms of reference.
We're not going to tell you. Yes, we will. There will be terms of reference, councillor Bolton, most definitely, because Fiona always does that. Okay, thanks. Any further opportunities? We want to note the opportunities set out in the report for securing infrastructure funding, we've noted those. Pass observations or recommendations to the executive. I don't think we need to do that until we've got the working group going and can get into the meat of it. Wyatt.
Rather than try and delay this whole, or see this whole process delayed for the want of terms of reference of some of this stuff, I wonder if it's possible that Fiona, if based on other previous documents, you could knock something up with Yasmin, and we could come to me and then use email to circulate it around so that by the time of our next meeting, we've got a near-complete, if not already agreed, draft, at least by us, of what the terms of reference should be for this working group? Rather than appear with a first-start draft at the next meeting, and it's two more meetings before we've even sorted out terms of reference? If everybody's comfortable with using email circulation for that sort of thing.
Thank you. And I think, members, we should, with your agreement, try and ensure that the direction it's headed is that which Martin, Mr Knowles, has pointed us in really, where we need to make sure that we know what we want around the borough. The first thing that we've got to get in place is exactly what we want around each of the towns. It should be in our neighbourhood plans, it should, all that information should be coming in. It should have been in long before the local plan was put through, of course, but it's better late than never within the SIL test and be straight with the developers. Put money where mouth is, partner with Surrey, so we need to concentrate on that as well. And be willing to, you know, get the funds together, find the funding ourselves, and somehow, we've got to overcome the problem which we sort of had with the air quality groups, which is that Surrey County Council can't put a bid in until the bid's been written, and they haven't got the time to write the bid. So, and, you know, the deadline's coming for the bid to go in, and we've got to get ahead of that game and get those bids ready-written so that they can be finalised when, you know, as funding streams come available through the LEPs and other streams. Members, anything further you want to add to that? Okay, is that agreed? Thank you very much indeed. Okay, if we can move on quickly to our corporate performance report. Sneaking in at the back, I noticed we have our chief executive officer, Tom Hallward, who is here especially to talk about our performance report, I understand. I'll pass it over to you, Tom.
Mr Chairman...
Oh, sorry, have I gone and missed our air quality update with... Have I done that?
Mr Chairman, may you hear the officer about the air quality update? Thank you.
I'd missed an item, didn't I? Because it wasn't amongst these. Item eight, I do apologise, is an air quality update verbal from Richard Homewood. Richard.
Thank you, Chair. It will be a very brief update this evening. Firstly, in terms of the police investigation, that is continuing, and we are still awaiting a decision from the police. In terms of what's going on looking forward, certainly we're making significant progress with the review of the diffusion tube network, and we're hoping to take a report to the Farnham Air Quality Working Group and the Air Quality Steering Group in the next cycle, which starts towards the end of this month, with some recommendations as a result of that review of the diffusion tube network. In addition to that, we've now got both of our analysers fully operational, following the issues in Godleming while the church and flats were built. So they're both now fully operational. There is a schools' air quality programme project underway in which three Waverley schools are participating, along with Surrey schools across the county, to raise awareness of the health impacts of air quality amongst children and to encourage children to pester their parents, to change their behaviours in terms of the use of motor vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. We've also, through the Air Quality Steering Group, fed back to the county council on the electric vehicle strategy and the low-emission strategy, and members of the groups have also fed back nationally on the national air quality strategy. In terms of local air quality, we're now six months into, seven months into readings with the new laboratory for this year, and certainly at the moment, we're monitoring those results closely. And the indications are that once we get to the full 12 months of figures and apply the bias factor corrections, air quality is improving slightly in Waverley as a whole. So that's an encouraging indication, but we can't confirm it until the end of the year when we've got the full 12 months' worth of data. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. On that, I mean, I can't actually want to go in relation to the, I mean, obviously, we can't have any idea of what the data means unless we've got the automatic monitors working and correctly calibrated. Have we got anything that you can say about that? Everything's hunky-dory now, is it in that direction? Because I had asked for the data for those, and obviously we'd need to take a look at that at some point.
As I said just now, Chair, both of the analysers are now fully operational, providing data. That will be taken through the Air Quality Steering Group to provide information on that. There is, of course, the national bias factor adjustments, which we can use if the analysers locally are not functioning.
So we will expect to have a full year's figures that is reliable for 2018, that will be reported early in 2019 next year, so we'll be back on course again.
That's correct, Chair.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Comments, councillors, members? Wyatt.
Thank you, Chair. Richard, thanks for that verbal update. Clearly, awareness and those kinds of things are important, but I think they're rather nibbling at the edges of the issue. I think you and I have talked before about what we really need is action, probably by Surrey, on reducing and controlling traffic. We've got an outline plan called the Farnham Town Centre Plan. I'm not sure if you've been given as much detail as exists, but do we have the potential to look at those plans and get an idea of what sort of impact they would have? Because for somebody in my position pushing for these things to happen, I kind of wanted to know, well, if we made that happen and we reduced the traffic in Farnham, say, by 50%, would it have another effect to make our air quality legal again? Or actually, does it need to be yet more drastic? And I wondered if that's something we could look at going forward.
Yes, Chair, we can look at that going forward. Obviously, we need to work with our county council colleagues, and once we're provided with the detailed proposals for Farnham, then we'll be able to make a judgement on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions on air quality locally? No? Okay, everybody happy with that? Thank you very much indeed for that verbal update, Richard. Any officers who aren't needed may disappear. I don't know whether any of you have...
They're slipping out.
Gradually disappearing, aren't we? Yeah. Okay. If we move on now, back to item nine, which is Chief Executive Tom Hallward, please. You're on.
Chairman, good evening. Good evening, councillors, colleagues. Very pleased to be able to present to you the quarterly performance report for quarter one in the new format. And the format's been developed by managers and also in consultation with the overview and scrutiny chairman. And I think the committee is very used to receiving quarterly reports on performance for the services in its remit, particularly focusing on key performance indicators. What you have this time is a single report that's going to all of the scrutiny committees that encompasses wider than the key performance indicators. It covers other aspects of council performance, including performance on delivering the service business plans that you'll have seen and approved. It includes the range of corporate indicators around internal audit recommendations, for example, complaints, workforce data, finance and other things as well. And it really brings it together into one report that you should be able to see and consider, hopefully in a more graphical and also transparent way, because it also includes an increased narrative as well. So one of the features of the new style report is greater explanation, greater narrative about the last three months from our heads of service and from the management team, looking at performance issues, looking at the key issues for the next few months as well. So it includes the things that have worked well, the things that we're proud of, the things that haven't worked so well, the things that are keeping us up at night, and also looks ahead to the future in terms of the things that we're going to be focusing on. So clearly, it's a new format, and there's still some further tweaks to make. And in fact, we've been to two of the scrutiny committees so far, it's been well-received so far, but there's always suggestions for how we can tweak it for quarter two. So I'd welcome any feedback from committee members on that. Overall, in terms of the content, performance is good. Overall, in terms of the content, performance is good for the council and there's further detail in terms of the services within your remit, specifically environmental services and planning, and the relevant senior officers are here to answer any points of detail that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members. Well, you've hopefully seen the new formats and the pie charts and all that sort of thing and had a chance to look through it. I know the committees last week were fairly positive about it, but I think we've, obviously, things will develop as, as time goes by. It's, it's, it can be improved a little, I gather. Wyatt, I know you wanted to comment on this. Do you want to start off today now?
Fine, Chairman, thank you. I wanted to start by first of all saying that I think the, the new report is a step improvement. I very much like the pieces of narrative. I like the way it starts with the, all of the council in the first few pages and then we start to drop down. Speaking as accountant, I was a little disappointed that the finance information at the head of service level was simply a cut and paste job out of the summary that had already been prepared. I think certainly we, for the environment head of service and for the planning head of service, would, would want to see more financial information. There's some typos and there's some learning points where some of the layout doesn't seem to quite work, but I won't dwell on those. Being specific, I'd like to go to page 52, where we're into the dashboard for environment and to ask, Richard, since you're here, this issue about the community is clearly generating more waste and then we talk about the, the bring sites. I wondered if more waste is that people are producing more waste or is it that people are diverting more DIY waste into their black bin or, or black bags and avoiding paying extra costs on it? And then...
Or is it being closed on Thursday and Fridays?
Well, I don't see that as a problem, Jerry, but you can add that. And I'd also kind of re-environment, because I think it might be relevant, note the nervousness issue expressed on page 59, how staff jumped rather than wait for the contract change. I suspect perhaps the individuals weren't aware of TUPi. Clearly, we're not dealing with housing operations here, but since in environmental you've got a number of big contracts changing soon, I wondered if we should be taking some action to make sure that the operatives are aware that TUPi transfers mean they're likely, if not 100% guaranteed, to transfer on their exact same terms and conditions and therefore perhaps mitigate against them jumping ship ahead of the competition. So with those ideas, I'll, and over to you, Roger.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the growth in household waste, it is a fact and a recognised fact that if the economy is quite buoyant, people do spend more and generate more waste. That's a recognised fact. And when there is a downturn in the economy, waste tends to drop as well because people, you know, tighten their spending and they don't buy so much, so they don't produce so much waste. So that's a recognised phenomenon. In terms of diverting DIY waste into the grey bins, we've not done any analysis on that. It is a possibility that some more waste is being put into the grey bins that should have gone to the, the household waste sites operated by the county council. And we're very conscious of that and aware of that in terms of fly tipping as well. And we are monitoring fly tipping closely to see if that's increasing because of the restrictions on the, the household waste sites. So we're keeping an eye on that, but we've not done any detailed analysis of, of the contents of the grey bins yet to, to identify any increase in DIY waste in it. In terms of the, the staff jumping ship beforehand and the TUPi, the contracts that I'm looking at and I'm dealing with are already existing long-term contracts and all of the staff directly affected by the change in the contract are not employed by the council, they're employed by the contractor. And TUPi will apply to them and they're all fully aware that TUPi will apply. And I'm not aware that there's a sudden rush of staff leaving our contractor on the waste contract, certainly. In terms of staff internally within the council, there are no immediate proposals to change the number of staffing or the structure around the contract management side of things at the moment. So apart from the, the changes we've had recently, several of them were in relation to maternity leave and the others were people who've left for career progression, which is a natural phenomenon in any, in any event.
So if you, if you look at page 59, where it talks about the housing operation, and I guess it's the MERS contract, but it doesn't say specifically, it says that the contractor receives a number of resignations due to staff nervousness over job security after the changes to the current contract due to an unsuccessful contract procurement process. This issue is being closely monitored through weekly reporting to ensure that the scheduled work is done in an agreed time. Well, that's fine after the horse has bolted, but as I made the observation about perhaps making sure that our contractor is, is assuring his staff that even if it's a change of contractor, they'll be okay because they'll TUPi transfer. And thanks for your answer, because I think that covers it.
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of the MERS contract, having been involved with it, I know there are a large number of the staff in MERS who'd TUPi transferred a couple of times as the chance, as the contract had gone back and forth over the years. They certainly were aware of it, but change does create some uncertainty for some. So whether they were TUPi or not, and most of them will, it does create a certain amount of uncertainty and they did have a certain number that resigned, but they were aware of TUPi and it was contracting staff.
Thank you, members. Do we have any comments on the indicators? What do you, what do you think of the, the new layout? Have you had a chance to look through it? If any of you have, please pipe up and let officers know what you think of it? Or do you want to reserve your judgement until future days when you've settled into it a little bit more and it becomes second nature? Did you want to say something, Peter?
Yes, I would, I just think it's a very good style of report. I like the way the comments come out of it. You know, it's a very full, frank report. I like it.
Great, thank you. It is, it does seem to be clear and perhaps easier. Perhaps seems almost less concise than it was before, but I do like it. I think we'll settle into this. On page 39, I noticed myself, for instance, and this, this isn't specifically, specific to our committee, but for instance, the fourth bullet point down under successes is income generated from the commercial property portfolio. I do feel that when we're looking at this sort of report, we want something specific and, I mean, you know, a penny is, and profit is an income that comes in. We want to know a little bit more rather than just bland statements, but this is the first time and we're, we're, obviously, things are going to hopefully become more specific as we, as we move on. Page 37, there's issues on staff sickness absence data. I always tend to think, what aren't we being told there? I mean, you know, how is sickness being tied in with holidays and bank holidays and school holidays and all the rest of it so that we're actually getting to understand what's going on when we see these numbers? And are these comparable in any way with the private sector? You know, because it's, it is different to the private sector, obviously. So, you know, it's what's the data based upon and so some more information on, I don't know, perhaps, I know this was checked out a couple of years ago, that the ONS committees did go through a lot of these performance indicators and get behind them a little bit and see, you know, what information we were being given and then check that it was relevant to us. And we were comparing apples with apples, you know, at, at times, but I want to make sure that when we're looking at things, you know, as a committee, that that is really meaningful and we know exactly what it is we're being told when we see these figures in terms of, you know, what is it in real life? We've got figures here saying, you know, how much time people take off, but is it just, well, I'm sick because it's one day left in the week that I add to my holidays, it gives me the whole week off, you know, that sort of thing?
I wonder if I might suggest on that, I wonder if it would be appropriate to include some sort of external benchmark? Is there a figure of what nationally councils achieve or what is achieved by the private sector, which gives us a comparator as to how we're doing versus people outside of our own target?
Chairman, if I may, just, just on sickness. So comparing between councils is sometimes quite difficult because some councils have quite a different sort of workforce. So typically councils with an in-house manual workforce, for example, with waste control, for example, waste collection still within the council tend to have far higher sickness rates. Nevertheless, we do get some data from other councils, particularly across Surrey, and I'm looking at the data that was shared with me last week from across the council, across the county of Surrey. Of the eight districts and boroughs that shared their information, because three did not, Waverley has the third lowest, so third lowest of the eight, if that makes any sense. So it ranged from one council which had an overall amount of about three days to one that went up to 10 and a half. So it's a huge variance and when you start going under the bonnet, you start to see actually there's some very different workforce makeups of different councils, depending on the sorts of decisions about what they've outsourced over the years and what they haven't. So that's why where there are comparisons between councils, to do a more sophisticated analysis would be to find those sorts of councils that are a bit more like us in terms of workforce composition, then it would be a bit more valid. It's quite hard to do that because so many councils have gotten, taken so many decisions, not completely impossible, but at the very least, hopefully that gives you a bit of reassurance that, that we do try to compare across the sector. If we try to compare with private sector, it won't be a surprise to you that private sector sickness rates tend to be lower than public sector, probably all sorts of reasons for that, including the fact that public sector perhaps is less likely to remove people or culturally frown on such things, possibly, arguably, than some private sector businesses. But even with, within the public sector, there's vast differences. So county councils or councils with social workers tend to have higher sickness rates because of the nature of the work they do and that's to a certain extent understandable. NHS has a far higher sickness rate, but then if I was working in the NHS, I'd probably be catching all sorts of things as well. So that's some of the difficulties that, but we do keep an eye on that. We do try and monitor how trends are going, in particular, it's interesting for us, what you also see on the graph is the split between long-term and short-term sickness and our HR team look at patterns. Is it happening on Fridays? Is it happening on Mondays? All of those sorts of things as part of general kind of management and, and will flag up issues as they occur. So really, for councillors' benefit, this gives the headline, you can see trends, you can see against the target that was set some time ago with councillors and, but there is, there is more detail underneath and of course, we can then look at service by service as well. So there's quite a lot of data underneath that we would be concerned with, hopefully you would be less concerned with unless you started seeing some trends moving in a particularly difficult direction for us.
Thank you very much. So although it may not be, with workforce data, it may not be directly comparable with other councils or whatever, it's still useful for us in order to keep track of any trends here, whether there's any problems or whether things are getting better, everybody's becoming super fit. I do just refer members to page 53, workforce quarter one update, comment, there's a number of staff changes happening in the environment team due to maternity leave and resignation and retirement. So obviously something, so pregnancy is catching there, it seems, and recruitment's underway. But take it easy on your staff over the next few weeks if you, because I understand Richard is quite heavily laden with work in, because of it. So we do what we can to help out, not give him too many stupid questions to ask. Okay, we've got Peter first of all, please, and then Maurice.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I just can say, I think Chief Executive made the point that managers manage, we shouldn't be micromanaging this sort of thing. They know what the workload is for their particular division in Waverley and they, on the whole, I think, do an excellent job. Therefore, I'm happy to see the figures there and as long as they aren't shooting up, I think we leave alone.
And councillor Byne?
You pulled us back to page 39 and it titillated my thoughts in terms of the second point of success. I don't know whether we've been told about how that success was achieved, what happened, not in great detail, but some understanding. And is this something that we as councillors should be learning from that? Because we have obviously all got to keep our eyes open for people who are, for whatever reason, not looking after themselves or likely to succumb if they're not watched over.
Are you hoping that someone will tell us a secret and it wasn't just that they were starving to death or something like that? Can anybody tell us why it says swift action by the community meals team almost certainly saved the life of a customer, which sounds good? Do we not know? We'll find out another time for you, councillor Byne. Okay, any comments, please, that we'd like to take forward to the executive? Did you have anything particularly? No? Okay, members, thank you very much. Item 11, oh, thank you very much, Chief Executive, Tom Hallward, for coming along. I don't think, I'm sorry, you came along and sat through the meeting with us, Nora, but I don't think we're going to have to refer to you tonight, but thanks for being here. Committee Forward Work Programme, so, oh, we've got another one I've missed out. Oh, it's you! No wonder you're telling me about that. Festered interest. Overview and scrutiny, annual report 2017-18, item 10 on pages 65 to 92. Yasmin, please, if you'd like to present all your hard work.
Thank you, Chairman. So some members of the committee will remember that Waverley undertook a review of its ONS arrangements in 2016, which resulted in fundamental changes to the way Waverley does scrutiny. This report in front of you reflects on the first year of those, of the new arrangements, including the successes of the new process and the improvements still to be made. I'd like to thank the councillors who were able to complete the survey, either in 2016 or in the most recent version of 2018, and inform this report. I'd like to emphasise that I always welcome feedback concerning ONS. So if members, any members weren't able to complete those surveys, you haven't missed your chance to contribute and I'd welcome any further feedback. The report observes a lot of the successes in the past year, but it also highlights some of the areas for improvement that ONS could do better. Publicity and public engagement was one of those areas, as well as involving external partners. As we continue to embed the new process, these will be two main areas of focus. As the first report since the new arrangements, I invite the committee to comment on the report, particularly its format and layout, and to reflect on the past year of ONS. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Well, yes, I can, I can't thank you enough for the hard work that you've put in in doing ours and I do apologise that I certainly know the members as well that didn't, perhaps didn't contribute enough to help you there, but you've done an excellent job. We've got councillor John Ward with us, so, and he wrote the introduction, so if you want to slag him off at this point, you're welcome to do so. Members, members, any comments, please?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a number of minor typo, type observations that I'll pass to Yasmin, but items that I wanted to kind of seek views on, starting on page 70, where there's a reference to, on the third line, challenge to the executive and partners. I'm getting muddled as to who partners are and yet we don't seem to be including officers. Is that a deliberate?
Chris Nicholson, isn't it?
Do you want me to carry on with questions or?
Yeah, yeah.
And then if you move to page 75, it starts by saying, under environment and overview and scrutiny, it says the committee undertook an in-depth review. And then a bit later, we talked about the working group. That seems muddled to me and clearly it was the working group that undertook the review all along, the committee tasked or something? Also on page 75, in the second paragraph for overview and scrutiny, we talk about the review of the development management function. Unfortunately for me, that phraseology made me think of HR and doing something to help our managers be better developed, whereas of course, when I thought about it a bit more, but I got down to who was involved, I realised this was development as in property within planning. And so perhaps with Elizabeth's assistance, we could put something that says the review of the planning development management or the development management function within planning or just something that makes it obvious to idiots like me that we're talking about property.
Yes, sir. Happy for Yasmin, just to clarify the wording there was the...
The fundamental one I'd like to look at is, I'm not happy about the treatment of the don't know group in the 2015 analysis, when the not answered group are not identified in the 2018 analysis.
Your, to explain, members, is page 78 onwards where there are the pie charts comparing the two, the past and present systems.
Absolutely, Gerry, thank you, yes.
Okay, so, yes, carry on. Okay, so, yes, carry on.
So if you look, for example, on page 78, you'll see that in 2015, about a quarter of the people answered by saying don't know. Previously, we've said, but in 2018, we did allow people to not answer the question, but we haven't put the number of people that's not answered. And to me, 16% for the blue quarter compared to 82% is not a valid comparison when you got the 26. For question one, it doesn't actually matter very much, but I personally think that what should be compared with the 82% is 16 over 16 plus 58, i.e. the percentage of people that actually answered yes or no, rather than total number of people who answered, because clearly we were asking them in a different way. And that way, I would say that the move is from 22% to 82%, a change of 60%, rather than a change of 66%, which you can see at the beginning of the second paragraph underneath. As I said, in that case, it doesn't make any difference because the conclusion is the same. But there are one or two where it does start to change the way the wording would read. And I'm seeking a wider view on how this should be done. Specifically also with regard to that table of the surveys and questions, I'd like to see a summary of... Page 88, going all the way through to...
80, but from 79, 80, you were concerned about the three and four, or the one was...
I'll leave that with Yasmin to read. That we should have a summary of the conclusions or a summary of the future improvements that have been identified from the survey. And perhaps, since on most occasions, it's the last sort of sentence of the paragraph, perhaps put that in bold so that when you read each one, you'll get to the key conclusion. And then at the end of the bit about the surveys is a list of the improvements. And that's it apart from the typos, which I'll give to.
Okay, well, thanks very much for your input there. And I do agree, we need to ensure that things are directly comparable if we're going to put it up. But there's also a sort of story that you can see from it. I mean, you say, you've got to look at what's the question that people are being asked. They're saying, do you think scrutiny worked effectively with the senior management? And very few people said, yes, it's effective. And now people think it's a lot more effective. Well, I don't know how that's changed that much, but at least people are happier than they were. It may be just that now there is an opposition here and things are, there is bound to be more scrutiny. And so people think that it's more effective, whether it's actually effective or not. They see that there's, you know, more shouting going on or questions being asked or whatever. But it'll be interesting as scrutiny develops over the coming years to see how this changes. Members, was that Peter?
I'm just going to say, I disagree with your comment. I come to ONS as a member, not of a political party. I come here to talk about what is important to my constituents, whatever persuasion they are. So I don't think, for me, that is quite correct.
Anybody else?
And I support that view.
You're perfectly entitled to that view. I think most people would say that most of us don't like to scrutinise ourselves. And so naturally, scrutiny will be, there would be more scrutiny if there are other people around who will, but that's what the council's about. But I understand, I know, that's not a criticism of you. We are all in that position. I don't want to scrutinise myself any more than any other one. Do you know what I mean? It's much more fun to scrutinise somebody else, isn't it? Mary?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I would say over the past few years, the scrutiny has improved enormously. The times that I've sat in this chamber in years gone by, pulling my hair out and frustrated because I felt as though we've not been listened to. And I do now feel as though we've not been listened to. I do feel we've got greater engagement with our officers and our members across boundary. So I would congratulate everybody involved because I think the improvements speak volumes and scrutiny is much better. But we mustn't lose sight, we must continue to scrutinise all the way through and not be punished for not doing it. So that's our role. Thank you, Chairman.
Absolutely, thank you very much, indeed. Any other comments? Yasmin?
Just to say about the comment on, was it page 70? It was about partners, Critical Friend to Executive and Partners. As identified in the report, scrutinising external agencies is an area for improvement. And so partners would include external bodies that we can invite to scrutiny meetings or working groups. So it includes Surrey County Council, or we've had Public Health come into our working groups. So it's an invitation, as we've talked about before, they don't have to attend, we can't force them to turn up to scrutiny. But we can invite them, and that's one of the roles we have.
Should that bullet point, and I think we're looking at page 70, what is Overview and Scrutiny, first bullet point, should that include officers?
Okay, the council, it's officers and partners. I don't know that it adds, that we have to edit, because by the council implies it's the officers in a way, doesn't it? As well as the members. Not too fussed about it. Okay. Do we have any comments we wish to take forward specifically? I don't think there's anything we can particularly add value to this, other than some very good comments there from Wyatt. Thank you for going through that. Those will be taken forward by Yasmin, I know. Okay. Oh, we agreed, we're not going to bother making any recommendations to the executive directly on that. There is nothing to add value, is there? Agreed. Thank you. Committee Forward Work Programme. We need to be quick, we've got one minute before you want to go home. It's item 11, pages 93 to 106. Yasmin, would you like to present the updated work programme, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Forgive me, I've been making notes on my notes or what I would say on this item throughout the meeting because there's been quite a lot of discussion. So if I stop and pause, it'll be because I'm trying to figure out which note is for which item. So members will see in the work programme item on page 95, in the top row, that an item on the infrastructure delivery programme was due to come to this meeting. Unfortunately, and the Vice-Chair has pointed out to me already, this is effectively a typo and I failed to update the work programme, to reflect the fact that item seven on this agenda we're looking at today is on planning infrastructure. So this item has been presented to provide some background on the topic as a starting point, in case members wanted to do further work on infrastructure. And obviously, there's a good desire to do that. So that's something I've added to the work programme and will perform that working group. So therefore, the top item on page 95 should read planning and infrastructure with the purpose reflecting the agenda item seven of this agenda. Discussion today shows this is something that members are keen to be involved in. And Fiona and I will pick up that work and make that happen. The committee will notice that in addition to the standing items, now looking, still on page 95, an item on the impact of Surrey County Council changes to the community recycling centres is on the work programme for November. I will be discussing with Richard about whether this is a suitable time for November. But I think this is something that's been on the work programme for a while, so I think we'll bring that to November if the committee members are happy with that. The agenda for November, you might notice, is looking quite light. So I'd be happy to take any suggestions in terms of additional items. In terms of future items, there has been discussion about a joint enforcement initiative item being brought to this committee. And if this is still something the committee would like to receive, and this is perhaps something we could add to November. Obviously, avoidance strategies is something that's been brought up this evening. So this is something that we'll add to either the next agenda or a special that we've already touched upon today. So this is something we could include in that agenda as well. The committee, going forward, in terms of, in the longer term, adding items to the committee work programme, the committee might want to take inspiration from the presentations given by Richard and Elizabeth in July this year, just before the public committee meeting. I'm happy to share the content of those, as I'm sure Elizabeth and Richard are as well. So that's it from me, really. I'll be discussing with Richard about the joint enforcement initiative and whether it's timely to bring that to the committee. But if the committee have any suggestions they'd like to add to the work programme or anything they'd like to move around, I'd be happy to hear from them. Thank you, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you very much. Members, anything in particular that you'd like to see on the programme? We have, I think, sort of agreed earlier, didn't we, that we would bring JET to a meeting and we would want to give as much time as possible, perhaps even its own meeting, to the avoidance strategies and European Court rulings issue because they have such a big effect. We've also got the special meeting, which is probably the end of October for the local plan part two that we will be meeting for. We've got some swatting up to do for that one as well. Is there anything particular that any of you members would like to bring forward? Or is there anything particular that the portfolio holder would like us to look at? If he wants to come in.
Thank you, Chairman. It is not for the portfolio holder to set the agenda of the scrutiny committee. It is your responsibility, sir.
Yes, it is. But if you're nervous about something and you want us to give you, you're okay, you're welcome to ask, we can refuse. Okay, councillor Isherwood?
I think council for us goes first.
Ladies first, what a gentleman, eh?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yes, portfolio holder, we are the one who brings things to you, and I would like to bring this one to you, if it's appropriate, and I'll be guided by the professionalism of our officers. We saw last month, there was a consultation that was extended on the dog fowling issue that arose as a result of irresponsible dog owners. It wasn't just about that, it was about how many dog walkers, professional pet sitters and providers can do. That consultation, in its first initial period, generated so many responses. And I'm grateful that the consultation process was extended to allow more people and for officers and when it comes to the executive to look at it. And I'm really minded to ask, please, could this come back to this committee? Because those responses, over 800, I think are really important. We need to be seeing, to be saying to the people who took the time to respond, we are listening. It's not just rubber stamped. We are taking the individual needs of this borough into account. We are looking at the rural nature of it. We are not Hampshire, we are Waverley, and we have very specific requirements here. And I would like to see all of those comments analysed and go forward then to the portfolio holders and the executive for a fair resolution and comment to the problems that are out there at the moment. Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sure you'll be declaring a personal interest, won't you, in that when it comes forward? Councillor Isherwood?
Yeah, Chairman. Just the proposals to change the services at community recycling centres. I particularly asked councillor Bolton to look at the difference between Whitley, on the one hand, which is open seven days a week, and Farnham, which I think is only open about four days a week now, five? Sorry, five. And see how much more fly tipping in that area is actually taking place. Because I do think there is some connection there. And I would like to think that we can persuade Surrey, despite their lack of funds, to review their hours and days of operation.
Yes, thank you, good point. I think it's four days, because we're not open on Thursdays, Fridays and Sundays in Farnham, are we? I think. Anyway, Annie?
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of the dog fowling and dogs on leads consultation, it closed at the very end of last week. We've now got 1,600 responses. The vast majority of them are dog owners. So the results are reflective of the interest group that filled the survey in. But I certainly think by the next meeting, we'll have had time to go through the 1,600 and do something with that. And we'll certainly look at the, we could look at the hotspots, I think, of fly tipping as well. You could probably combine that with the JET team review. So those are two items you can probably pick up together.
I don't know whether people, I mean, I noticed early on in the process that the Kennel Club had made an excellent response, or what I thought was an excellent response. And, you know, it'd be nice to know that. I think that could be a basis, you know, for summarising and then seeing what other good points the other 1,600 people raised on top of that. So if it saves a bit of work, it's a good starting place, I think, certainly. Members, any other comments? Wyatt?
Thank you, Chairman. There were one or two things that I wanted to pick up to check that we didn't miss them going forward. First of all, I know I'm leaping ahead a little bit, but on page 99, where we talked about the service plans, we identified a need for information regarding 106 agreements. The response was that there'd be an item brought to the September 2018 committee, so that's this committee tonight, on infrastructure delivery programme, which include the topic of section 106 agreements. I'm not sure we went into enough depth on that. So when we create this other activity, can we do more? And perhaps if there is some immediate wins in terms of information, bring stuff back next time.
We have a working group on the case, I think, don't we?
Chairman, if I could just add to that, one of the things that we included in the early report, which Graham did allude to, is we have started quite an extensive bit of work in looking to improve the monitoring and spending regime through this new system for 106. So that work has commenced, and at some point, probably within the next six months, we'll be in a position to report quite extensively on the outcomes of that. So we can give you an update, certainly. But the reason that we weren't able to attach it to this current report, other than to say, we've started that work, it's in the service plan and we are doing it, is because it is quite extensive. But what it would involve is, as Graham was explaining, all current extent section 106s being logged on to the new system, which will be their reference, all the infrastructure that's linked to those 106s, what they're being spent on and whether it's been spent. So the questions that you're all asking us all the time, what happened to that 106 on that permission, will all be available in a very coherent and easily accessible form. So that's why we haven't been able to bring it tonight, because it's work in progress, but it is being done. Thank you, Chairman.
Could you just remind me what, it was called Exicon or Lexicon or Excons?
Exacom, E-X-A-C-O-M, is the name of the IT system for SIL and section 106.
So would individual members be able to inquire on that system?
Absolutely, Chairman. And also, there is a public module, because all this information is contained within section 106s, which are a public document. Members of the public interested in accessing to find out the same answers to the same questions will eventually be able to do the same thing themselves. So self-serve. Thank you.
I think that's what lots of people have been dreaming of for so long.
That's why we're doing it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. You make a lot of people very happy. Wyatt?
Yeah, I have heard tell of even councillors that spend all their time reading documents. Perhaps even if all the data isn't yet on the system, at a meeting soon, we could at least have a little example or a taste of what's to come, re, how this might work, if that's suitable.
That's fine, Chairman, yeah, certainly.
I'll give you sneaky previews. And the second item I wanted to raise was on page 95, where we had a few things that I thought were coming up today, and one of which was the LGA peer review update brackets to be given in the committee work programme item. And isn't that the thing that now is going to try and be covered at the briefing on Tuesday 25th at five o'clock? Except I would say there's a difference between being briefed and the scrutiny process on the document or report that follows. So whilst I'm happy that there's going to be a briefing, I still think whatever follows in terms of what's going to be done or the paper should come to this group, whether that's next meeting or later, I don't know.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Members, you are aware, you may well have had the email around very recently, that for next Tuesday, 25th, five till 6.30 here, is the briefing which covers the housing delivery test, planning peer review outcomes and LPP2 consultation outcome. So we'll see you here next Tuesday at five o'clock. I'm sure we've got audit following that. So, Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. And just to fill in a few gaps there, the peer review report has been received, it's currently been assessed by members. And as you say, we will be reporting, sorry, it's been assessed... say, we will be reporting, sorry, it's been assessed by officers. We will be presenting the headlines to all members at the briefing next week. There is a very clear link between some of the principal recommendations and salient points coming out of the review with, with planning delivery, and that's why it's, it's a very good opportunity to link it in the same briefing with the outcomes of the local plan part two consultation. After that discussion with all members on the headlines, we'll be taking a report through executive briefing and then back through the committee process in terms of what is next out of that peer review process, so I suspect that will be an action plan covering the three key areas that it's focused on, and, and they are committee structures, housing delivery, as I say, and also customer engagement. So there'll be some, some actions for all three of those areas coming out, and, and certainly, the intention is to bring that report, Tom will correct me if I'm wrong, but through the, through the full process, including to you as overview and scrutiny, to look at those outcomes and make your contributions as it, as it passes its way through to the executive. I don't know if Tom wants to add anything to that at all.
Wyatt, thank you.
And there just was one third point I wanted to cover. We discussed the, the issue of CRCs and closures and the impacts that having a decision by Surrey County Council. You'll all be aware that Surrey County Council has decided they've got no money left. It is probably not only making savings now, but starting to make cuts to services to the extent they're not statutory. What I think would be worthwhile for our group to do is just to keep an eye on the cuts that are being made, to see if there are going to be impacts on our services, on the people who need things from us, and therefore be looking to see if there's papers in that area that we should be seeking help from officers to identify or flag up to executive. I did think about that an example might be the day centres, but then I think that's a community, not an environment issue, so, but let's all stay alert, I, I will be alert in my dual-hatted role on, on impact it'll have and the things that we deliver, and I will raise a similar point with the coordinating board of the ONSs.
Perhaps we could get councillor Holder in to make some comments for us on, on the way Surrey County Council's going. Ladies and gentlemen, that's, I, I think that's all for this evening, we have got just item 12. Maurice Byrne.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mary, for bringing up the point about dog fowling, because I'd forgotten to come forward and ask questions, because I have people within the village who have been asking, what's happening and why is this happening, et cetera, et cetera, when are we going to get a report? So we highlighted what's happening. The increase in the number of participants, 1,600, is, sounds very good. How did we achieve that? How was that publicised? How much did social media take part in that? Do we ask the question of people, how did you find out about this? Because it would all be very interesting to understand, because so often, and again, talking about social media generally, on Facebook, so many people totally misunderstand which, which council is, is in charge of this, in charge of that, they make all sorts of strange, weird, and, and quite often inflammatory comments that are going to the totally, to the wrong people, and we've got to find a way, if we're not already doing it, of actually putting our information across so that people do understand it's what we're asking and what we're doing, we as a borough.
Well, I think what people need to do is tune in for the next instalment of the Environment, Overview and Scrutiny Committee, which, after LPP2, is going to be on the 26th of November, is it? Did I write that down somewhere? Yeah, we're, we're back on 26th of November, but probably a month before that, just over a month's time for LPP2. Okay, any other comments on Forward Programme? People can learn about dogs on the, on the 26th of November, if they can be patient, please. Unless, we don't need to go into exempt session, unless officers are bursting to tell us their secrets, are you? No, no one bursting to tell us any secrets? Okay. Thank you very much, officers, thank you, ladies, Fiona and Yasmin, and all our guests, ladies, Tom, chief executive, members, thank you very much, meeting close before nine o'clock, unbelievable. Thank you and good night.
Well done, Mr Chairman, first.